At six thirty. And we're here this evening to talk about the future of Town Hall. This is a workshop for the council to kind of hear proposals from the manager and discuss next steps. This will, there will not be public participation in this meeting, of course, thank you all for coming and listening in. But we will, this will probably be the first of many future conversations of which there will be a point where there will be public input. But for this evening, it's just going to kind of be discussion among the council and the staff. Tim, do you want to start us off?
Madam Chair, members of the council, good evening, members of the public. Keep on Zoom, good evening. So about six or eight months ago, we, we started to dust off and refresh the, looking at the project of doing something different with the town office because of the conditions of the building and potential use of the space that we have. Foster of the maintenance of the building, so I have a quick PowerPoint tonight, nineteen slides, myself, Denise, Jen put this together. Kind of show you what we, we've done a lot of research over the last eight months. We're no further ahead today than we are yesterday. We're gonna, we got to a place now where I need some guidance and input from the council, some thoughts. Yeah, I want to certainly thank Mike and his team who's given us a lot of guidance and helped us out. Jen and Denise has put a lot of time in on this project, Jen especially, she's done a lot of research. So I'll sign, go through this, at some points we have, I'll turn the floor over to Jen and I'll turn it over to Denise and it'll come back to me. Mike jump in where, where you need to. So.
This is Sarah Jorge in my office.
Yeah, Sarah's been working with us on our, kind of our little committee. So backgrounds, status and future plans is what we're gonna, is the, one of the headings we're gonna talk about tonight, making the right decisions. Do we real rehabilitate and stay and why do we stay? So we're gonna talk about rural location drawbacks. Current location potential. Exploring the new divisions, exploring a new site, the Town Hall benefits. Next steps and direction and guidance. The background work that's been done to date. We spent a lot of time looking at the current facility. We read the, there was a Town Hall inspection, it was done on two, it was a real estate inspection, it was done on two twenty-three, twenty-one. We read an air handling report that was done for the police department, two thousand and sixteen. We looked at all that information. We took into effect the current status of our staffing levels, we took into effect the building condition, the growth. The vision of the future of tomorrow, and then we looked at plans for the future to stay or relocate. What'll be the best options for everybody for the next fifty years so going forward? That takes us to making the right decision. The right decision's got to be involved for everybody for the South Borough residents. This building is really belongs, you know, it's the building, it's buildings that's help for residents. To do their business with, their, all their day-to-day stuff. It's a building for us to provide that services to the residents. It's, it's a business, it's a building for, you know, for the business community, men in visit, do their stuff. For the downtown, South Borough, for the town staff and then for the employees for the next fifty years. So rehabilitate or stay. So we looked hard at, what does this building have to offer now? What do we have, and by the way, I'm battling a little head cold, so I have to step forward, forgive me, I don't have COVID, I tested all weekend. So. The, the first issue that we found was the assessment that was done, the real estate assessment that I have a copy of that was sixty-six pages. Here, you don't have that. I must have, I don't know if you have it. It identified some sixty, sixty things that, that my visual inspection needed to be repaired. That's just a visual inspection, so one of the things we need to look at is, we would need to look at doing the true assessment of the building, and that could be with, with assistance, with evaluation. Mike gave me this, you know, kind of a price of thinking probably maybe thirty thousand plus, maybe more.
So, Tim, that's just to sort of figure out what needs to be done, the thirty thousand?
Well, well, that would be to assess what the building is, it'd be a building assessment.
Okay.
So what is, you know, all the, all this was here, this Town Hall inspection, when I read through it. And I want to make sure that those Town Hall inspection that picked out sixty-six items, it said everything from electrical to all conduit, all electrical system, all plumbing, leaking plumbing, leaky roofs, picked out all those things. It just said, this is an assessment that is only those defects observed on the day of the inspection, this is not an assess, an engineering assessment.
So nobody went into the wall?
Nobody went into the wall, nobody, all these pictures are, when you look at all these deficiencies, are pictures that you or I could have found. You know, looking, some of them with a flashlight, all just things, they didn't, you know, take any sample, they didn't do anything. So, one of the things we know for a fact that needs to be addressed is the heating and air handling system. We're gonna have to stop budgeting money, we're gonna end up, at least, we're gonna get caught if we don't budget some money, put something aside. We are gonna have Gag, he gains on doing evaluation on the boilers to at least make sure that they'll be a good opportunity to get us through the winter and do whatever we're gonna do to prime them up to make sure that they're on. We're gonna put a, we're gonna look at putting a heat water system in the building that'll maintain, you know, if it drops below, the heat shuts off and it goes low, a certain temperature it'll activate and allow, call somebody. I think that's, that's important. So, one of the, in the process of looking at rehabilitating the building and staying in the building. The big question that came up around the table when we talked about it was continuously, where would we go to do this, and in long discussions with Mike and his team, Mike said, you know, it can be done, but it's expensive to leave the staff there. Close off one side of the building or close off one end of the building and do something, and the best, most effective way to do that is vacate the building if we're gonna renovate it and leave, so that would ask that question, where do we go? And it'd be for a year where we perform our services, that we could all go, and you know, Denise had a really good point on that. In other towns, there are vacant mills, or vacant schools, or vacant other buildings that you could go to, we don't have that luxury here, it's not really such a great place. You know, where can we find a place to lease? When we talked a lot about renovation costs, and a renovation cost, Mike estimated could run between us two hundred to three hundred per square foot. That's an estimation of just the renovation cost. Remember the problem with renovation of the post new builders, every time they take a wall apart, they find something different. Your renovation cost now goes up more and more, so it's all the unknowns in the renovation cost. At sixteen thousand square feet, you're renovating, an estimate of three point two to four point eight million. That's what you're looking at, at this estimate right now. And this doesn't include the cost of leasing space for one year, we don't know where, but a hundred thousand. That's an option, these are all things we, these are, these are the things that we've talked about, that we've been facing, trying to figure out on the case. So that's to rehab, rehabilitate and stay, and then why stay? Well, I, I think one of the things we, we've heard a lot from is that the community seems polite, the downtown location of the town office, right in the South Square, right on Main Street. And that's a prominent New England Village kind of thing where, you know, in a lot of New England villages, years ago, the meeting hall, Town Hall, where Town Hall meeting concept came from. It was usually in a Town Hall meeting downtown or in the center of town, so, and so that's one of the buildings familiar, for the staff and the community, everybody knows that how to get in and how to get out. And the building is functionally operational as we speak. The, some of the drawbacks that we encountered, and the first one is obvious, you grasp an access from Town Hall. It's tough to get in and out, just, you know, eight o'clock in the morning trying to get in and then four or five o'clock in the afternoon trying to get out, you're waiting and waiting and wait. The offices are designed, used by existing space. That they were just, they were created by, you know, as we needed them, they weren't created for for the, for the meeting space, the public, the operational needs, so they're, they have the offices. And a perfect example of that is you look at the clerk's office and how cornered that is and, you know, and how we had to put up all the barriers and so forth and, you know, it's not, it's not very welcoming and friendly, but it's just, it's a small space that we, you know, we made fit, so. Some of the other drawbacks, the energy. Cost of the building, it's, it's terribly expensive to heat that building, we're heating almost, what, twenty thousand square feet, Mike, is that building?
No, you probably a gross spare footage, yeah, there's no insulation in the building, the windows in the building are, are just really nothing stuff.
Ketchup.
No, you just, you never catch up.
So, you know, we're heating a lot of space that's not being used in the daytime, you know, all the first floor and most of the third floor. And it's what it is, and the same thing, third floor doesn't have air conditioning, obviously. You know, the maintenance and operational deficiencies, you know, the building's old, so like God said, none of the windows closed tight. The, you know, we have water leaks in the roof, we've had several, you know, we've had problems with the air handling systems this year with two or three offices, we've had water leaks from the air handling system, the pipes are leaking. You know, we've had last year, we put one eighty thousand balls into the boilers. So this report, just in one day, of them, or however long they were here, identified sixty-six deficiencies. Going around and seeing, finding everything that was that they reported on, they could see HVAC equipment, fuel lines, thermostat, windows, walls, ceilings, plumbing fixtures, still all cabinets. Doors, sidewall systems, window conditions. Insulation conditions, ductwork, service panels, floor last plumbing, chimneys that cracks in it. Walls with stains on them, walls and surfaces with numerous water stains, ceilings with surface stains. So, those are, those are all things they could see, you know, and including rodents, rodents in the building, rodents in the office space, rodents in the kitchens. We do, you know, we have traps, but.
Sorry to interrupt, but if there's that many visually obvious things, lord knows what's underneath.
Well, that's the point of the, when we talked about the true assessment, I think that's one of the things that Mike and his team that we talked about, was we're more concerned with, like I said, it's hard to give you a true estimate on what our renovation would be, we don't, we don't know what's really there right now, so.
They found knob and two wiring.
They found what?
Knob and two wiring.
Wow, that's not a thing.
They found that in the walls, you know, and, and I'm not sure it's active or not, but they found it, you know, so.
Right.
It's those kinds of things, you know, it's an old building and to really do a, you know, to do your job, you almost have to gut the building, you know, and then restart from scratch, insulated new windows, new mechanical systems, and there's no ventilation in the building, except for the air points for the windows. But to meet current ventilation standards, which you have to have, especially with the pandemic, if you think about that, there's no ventilation in the building, there's no makeup air system in there. And you have to have makeup air in a new building, it's just when you button it up, make it airtight, but you have to have the safe energy, you have to have a makeup air system. So these are things that you have to, that we do in this old buildings, with this old building all the time, so this are, so fundamental parts of the making a healthy workplace.
Question, up until this point, all this like rehab stuff that we're talking about, is this talking about kind of sticking with our existing layout footprint, all of that, this, or is this a full gut of the building?
I would say this is a full, well, so here, that's a question you guys have to answer.
Okay.
Would you only want to repair half of that, but I think under code and, and under code, when you start doing it, you would have to upgrade the air handling system, you have to fix the windows, then that means you'd have to fix, you know, one's gonna not let you do the other, you're gonna leave, it's gonna take you to, you know, the plumbing, and then when they tear the walls open, they see all that old conduit electrical, the, you know, they would have to take that out and then, you know, so you're not gonna put in new windows and have an improper air handling system, you couldn't do it, code wouldn't let you, so.
By code, it's, it works like this, is that when you go over fifty percent of the value of the building to the cost of renovation, you have to comply with all current codes.
So. My whole piece on this was first off, just to bring you up to speed on a current bill, I just want to let this is just getting you up to speed. So. This is all the stuff we learned digging into this report, reading these reports, talking with Mike, talking with the staff, the crew. This is the stuff we learned, some of the drawbacks that we find on the next page. The boilers, we estimated are right around fifty years old, they've been replaced once, when they renovated the building, but we think they're right around fifty years old. There's some old electrical, the electrical tube and knob wiring, it's present, we can see it again, like Mike said, we don't know if it's used, some of it's buried in the floors and the walls, we can't tell. The air handling system, about functional, as we talked about, the windows are leaky, the chimney's got cracks, roof leaks, ductwork leaks. And then in that note, this doesn't include what's behind the walls. The next piece is the current location potential, and I'm gonna turn this over to Denise and have her go through that stuff.
Thank you, so selling the old Town Hall, that is one of the options that we discussed and that's being presented to you this evening. On, case in point, the building and the property is very much prime real estate for development. It's on a main street, very busy main street, lots of traffic, lots of volume, has high visibility, it would be a great building asset to put back on the tax rolls. The sale, at the outset, I think you had a, an initial business, you know, built a opinion of value, and it said about one point five million was what it generated as of last year, so that would put the property back on the tax rolls, right now it's tax exempt, and so you could generate at a minimum with the building size thirty thousand, and depending on the reuse and the number of businesses and personal property, you could generate a lot more. So then you could also sell by RFP rather than going with a commercial broker. I have experience selling several buildings, municipal buildings, and have saved anywhere from eighty to two hundred thousand dollars worth of commercial broker fee by selling by RFP, the other great part about selling it as a municipality is you're able to create criteria for highest and best use, so it just doesn't go to anybody, and so that's, that's an asset that you could probably consider rather than listing. The other pieces, I know folks have expressed concerns about losing the green space, you know, losing parking. You could actually build LPRP and the criteria that the municipality still retains ownership of the green, and create a park or keep it as a green. You could also require, and I think Mike's one that brought up this great point, that the first level be all retail. So whatever it is used for the other levels, at the base level is for retail services. Then you could also develop a public-private partnership so you could retain access for free downtown parking. So with all of that information, we decided, if we were gonna leave, where are we gonna go? So the places that we have looked at and considered so far is, first, we ran a report with all of the lots that the town owns. Then we wanted to narrow it down because we wanted to stay fairly close to downtown, because that's what people are familiar with. We did look at the lot right across the street here, we do own a piece of land there, but it's very narrow, and it just didn't seem to, the building wouldn't fit there well. We looked in the middle of the green space next to the fire department, but we did not want to lose that green space, and the neighborhood obviously has concerns with taking away any green space, which we don't want to do.
Hold on a second, so I want to make it clear tonight, while we're speaking, that I have not authorized to build a Town Hall in the playground area at, at the park. We have not done that, we've not agreed to sell, do anything, I haven't sold the Town Office, we're not building a Town Hall there. We, we, I have said it a thousand times and I keep saying it, we're a million miles away from that, but a rumor that going in, in the True Town neighborhood, you know, we would work with them if we were gonna go there and do something there, obviously, we've had some communication with some of them. But, you know, a lot of people have vocalized, you know, oh, that's a bad place, so it was just, we were just looking at, it was just a place of interest. Because we own, you know, and we were gonna try and offset it with another playground, a new playground, so, it was just an area, so there's been no commitment to the True Town neighborhood to that, there's been no commitment to anything, this is all in just exploratory work that we're looking at, that's all.
Yeah. Yep, so we had looked at the, oh, very open big green space in that area, and then we also considered possibly, if we were to build where the playground is currently, we could maybe re-put the playground where the tennis courts are. It was just another thing they had talked about, seeing some of the police department, there was talk about doing it there as well. But we, after talking with Mike, we're looking at plans, that space would be a little bit tight, and it wouldn't leave us the room to grow, to be able to be the Town Hall for fifty or a hundred years, and that is our goal, is to make it be good for a long time. We looked at Powder House Hill, the bottom of the hill, we did put the basketball courts there, and the space that's left, again, is not sufficient space for what we would need for the Town Hall and parking. We thought about selling the current building that the Town Hall is in now, and maybe building out front in that green space. But again, we thought too small, don't want to lose the small green space that we do have downtown. We met with the owner from Aroma Joe's, and he was very willing and open to work with the town about different ideas. We talked about either putting our building, the Town Hall, right where he is now, and we also discussed, he wouldn't want to close businesses, we can put it behind, sell a portion of the current Town Hall lot. Build the building kind of sideways behind where Aroma Joe's and Subway currently is, leave the businesses open. Incorporate them into the first floor of what would be a new Town Hall in that space, and then make green space out front. But at that point, one party would have to be the landlord, one But at that point, one party would have to be the landlord, one party would have to own the land. The Aroma Joes really didn't want to give up his land, he just bought it last year, so again, just another thing we've explored. The most recent spot that we have been exploring is, the railroad Ave parking lot has two point two acres, again, that the town owns. We could very easily fit a new town hall with additional parking in that spot. And that's one site that we're exploring now, which is this picture right here, that shows the parking area that's currently there now, just next to Cummings Mills. And the spot that we would be looking at doing is right here, we're circling towards the bottom, towards the corner of Norton Street and Railroad Ave. That would leave enough room to put the building there, leave parking, possibly even more parking. Does Mike want to elaborate on that?
I think that, you know, that's a good alternative, it puts the, the town hall quite in the crossroads of, you know, two streets that get used quite a bit. You know, you can see it as prominent, you can see it from Main Street, it doesn't kind of lose its connection to downtown. And there is a lot of people living around that area right there, and so it's, it's a viable site. And the good thing about it is that it's on the street, and it's in the town area, within the town center.
You're right, by the post office. And the bank.
Yeah, so it's really close to everything, obviously, you're sort of right in the center of town, but it's close.
I did do a Google map, and from the center of town, like, you know, where the traffic intersection is, we would be almost exactly the same distance, just in the other, on the other side of it.
You're right.
The intersection, exactly. Yeah, so these are just, we just wanted to make sure.
Comment on that site. That was the drainage area. And there's a pipe. It goes northerly from Norton Street, getting out that way. And so it wasn't always a pipe though. It was a gully, burning all the way up behind the Free Baptist Church. Yeah, it's a free. And so that's, that was like made land, so to speak. So that's just cautionary, make, make sure we're cool with the drainage. And then there would be a geotechnical analysis, because the soil was dumped there, it's, it's adequate not to hold up a parking lot and some lights, but when you get point loads associated with building, we need to have that due diligence to make sure that.
And because the site is so big, we would certainly not want to build on top of that area. And there's, yeah, we have talked to Mike about that, talked to Jay Ray Marki to make sure everybody knows where that concrete coverts are underneath.
I think the assumption is that that land below there is pretty much not good. It's, it's basically a filler here. Well, I mean, we're, we're, we're building Home Depots and Jordan's furnitures on top of landfills right now, I mean, that, that, that exists down already, that isn't, you know, the cost of real estate is so high, I mean, there's no place that says you can't build there. But there, there is costs associated when you, when you, if you have differential placement fills and, and unlike soils like Mike talks about.
So these are just, you know, the, the top things that we have looked at in trying to find the best spot for the town hall, if it were to be new, if we were to build, in trying to keep it as close as we can to downtown, as low, as well as keeping as many departments as possible as we can as well. So at the end, where could we locate a town hall, and I think the last one that has been explored is probably one of more viable options. So where could we have existing town-owned property? So essentially, we would not have to be taking this property off the tax rolls, it already is, so it's tax-exempt property, we're not removing something from the business community. It's still approximate walking distance to the downtown, and it's also in the community center fire station area, so it's already a hub of, of community activity. And on to the next slide. Office space needs really at about the ten thousand square foot level is what we need. We currently have sixteen thousand plus, depending on usable space. So, but if we have an inefficient space of sixteen thousand, this would make it a more efficient ten thousand square foot building. There would be no disruption to services and no relocation issues, we could stay operational up until move in. Again, the property tax from the town hall, depending on what that would generate, would offset whatever the bond payments is. We were guided that new building costs could run anywhere from three hundred and fifty to four hundred per square foot, giving us a high estimate using the higher cost of four million for new construction. But if you assume that you're going to sell at one point five million or more, you would end up with a cost to taxpayers of two point five. So at the end of the day, the higher cost really would be to renovate. And, and so that's, that's a consideration that is, is food for thought. So what would a new town hall be? It would be energy efficient, less obviously money on an annual basis on maintenance, repairs, and operations. It would be state-of-the-art and designed to be positioned for growth. Better accessibility for everybody, for the community, for businesses, for staff. Definitely would provide much easier access and even rest into the facility, still walking distance to downtown. And again, as we stated before, it's in a community center, community space area. So we found that this site, at this point in time, you know, before any kind of due diligence and test borings and the like, is a really serious viable option for you folks to consider.
Well, we, we were tied, the last six, three months grabbing this in to get this long stuff done. Mike, I want to give you the option, to give you the floor, anything you want to add, or would you give us some ideas, thoughts, if you've been sitting in on the meetings, tell us, you know, from your perspective, are we, are we in the right spot, are we, are we heading in the right area, are we talking? Where we, where we at from your perspective?
Well, obviously, everybody likes the downtown, the town hall where it is, I mean, that's really kind of what everybody likes. And I like it because I can walk there, and I think that's a key. But it's also central, but it's also impossible to get in and out of there if you drive, it really is tough. And, and the building, the building is an old building, you know, the building was built in the nineteen thirties, you know, and it's been renovated a few times, but the renovations are so old that, you know, they don't really meet any kind of current requirements for energy or, or interior air quality or things like that. And the building would really have to go through a significant, you know, renovation and, you know, vet rehab to really last in the fifty years, otherwise you're gonna be doing it again in twenty years. If you go in, you know, we've done a lot of bill buildings, we've done a lot of old buildings, and what I've learned over many, many years is that if you go into these things and you don't do a complete job, you wind up spending more time and money in the near future going back and fixing things. It really is a problem, you know, it's just the way it is, and and so the cost of what they are, you know, cost of construction, as everybody knows, has gone up crazy. You know, it's, you know, what we're doing today for three fifty, we were doing it for two fifty or two hundred, you know, or three hundred dollars four or five years ago. Fifty percent probably last four or five years. So if you're gonna invest money, you have to really invest your money correctly, and then the second thought is that, you know, we've talked about using the upper floors for rental space, rent the upper floor out to somebody else, you know, because you only need ten thousand square feet. The building has usable square footage, about sixteen thousand square feet. And that's six thousand square feet more that you have to renovate. And if you, you can't really renovate ten thousand and not do the whole building, you really can't do that. Because of code compliance and things like that, and everything else concerned with, you know, with bringing the building up to current standards. So you've always kind of got this issue of, you know, overburden of, of square footage and cost, and it costed, the cost to build a new building and to renovate, they really are about the same, because you tear it down and, and put it back up in place again. So if you can imagine, the costs are the same even though you're reusing all the bits and pieces. We've discovered that also over many, many years. Trying to find a space downtown would make a lot of sense to put a building up. You know, as much as I want to keep it, which is right now would be great, we, we looked at trying to use the space in the back parking lot to see if that would work. You know, we looked at every single conceivable opportunity that put in front. You know, just going, staying on the first floor and building out the front, we looked at all those options. And, and, and it always goes back to, you really can't do part of the building, you really can't do this part, and go back and do the rest of it. That never really works. So you either make a commitment to stay in town hall, and you realize that it's gonna cost this much money. You really have to do this work, you really have to get this thing turned, torn down to, to the bone, and look at what you have there. You know, to make sure the loading is correct, make sure the windows and doors are correct, make sure the fire ratings are correct, to make sure the air quality is correct, the heating is correct, insulation, and then rebuild it. You know, and then it'll last in the fifty years or sixty years for the next renovation. But you're gonna be out of the building for a year, you know. Everybody thinks six or seven months, it never takes, it always takes much longer. If anybody's renovating the bathroom, the guy says, I'll get it done in three weeks, he's there two months later. You know, it's, and that's the way with renovation projects. New construction, you know when it begins and when it ends, because it's a process. You know, it starts with the geotech work, the site work, the civil work, you know, and it goes right through the final touches of painting, you know what that is. The renovation work, you always have to figure you're gonna spend twice as much time doing that. And the other big issue is you really don't want to have a renovation project of any type with, you know, occupancy, it's gonna add thirty percent of the cost right off the, right off the bat, if it costs three hundred, two hundred bucks, it's two hundred, two hundred and sixty dollars, if it's three hundred dollars, it's three hundred and ninety dollars, or whatever that is. It will really add a tremendous amount of cost, and it'll also make the operations just absolutely miserable. We've done hospitals like that, we did three training posts. Anybody remembers that renovation? We did that, and they were in there. And that was very, very complicated. That was a very complicated renovation, and they have a million people going in and out of there a year, so. And it added about thirty-five to forty percent of the cost for that renovation project. But that was different for them, because that's having money, if you had the money for that work. So, you know, so that, that's one, that's one thought process, and the other thought process is new building. And, you know, there aren't a whole lot of spots in downtown to put buildings, we, we look very hard, keep looking at places. And maybe we have to spend a little more time thinking about each spot, and thinking about what they are, and you know, the potential for, you know, long-term growth, you know, accessibility and use. Is that part of town over there has started growing? I'm always surprised what they're building downriver without it. You know, there's always more stuff getting added there. So this, really, the town is kind of, the downtown area becoming more dense in that direction. So is that downtown kind of moving the center of town, may, you know? The other important thing by putting a larger structure, a two-story structure, which I think it really should be, is it adds fabric to the town, there's a tall bill building, there's other, but most of the buildings are in there two-story, so it adds that fabric to the town. And no matter where it goes, there shouldn't be a single-story building, because in a downtown area, it shouldn't be a prominent two-story structure. It's a smaller footprint, it's, the, the cost for the footprint become less, it pays for the elevator stairs, so it's more efficient. I think that's really it, and I think you need to sort of weigh each option and decide what is most important. In both the short term or long term. And, and, and then make a decision, I could help you with this, but I can't really say yes or no, because I think both of them are viable, it's just whatever the council thinks is where we go.
So with your consideration for the office space needing ten thousand square feet in this new two-story potential building off Railroad and Norton. You know, we look at the fire station, and we look at maybe a fire department's needs ten years down the road or wherever, in a building with shares of recreational facilities, will there be a need further down the road to have increased spaces at a town hall for other departments to come into, we need to renovate the fire department later on down the road? Just kind of wanted to flag that. And then I also like to just have Denise maybe kind of speak about if the town hall was, we put out an RFP for the town hall, and, and what type of long-term tax implications that could be, so we, we talked about like a TIP district downtown, like, would you just dive a little bit deeper, potentially? So, so obviously, selling the building is, is an extremely great idea if you choose to vacate the building and new construct. It's, you obviously have a very prime piece of real estate that is not used, you know, for tax purposes. Thirty thousand is just building assessment, current building assessment taxes, so that does not include if it's broken up into business units, you know, for retail, if it's used for a hotel, or if it's used for any other purpose. And now as far as the TIP district, independent of that, when I made the presentation a few months back, every property tax dollar seventy cents is lost right from town, and so you have thirty cents on every dollar. So if it's in a TIP district and you have that new valuation now, that one point five million generated thirty thousand, a hundred percent of that would actually retain itself in a downtown district or an economic development district. So any new growth. So it would behoove you to score definitely TIP district, especially if that is going to be on the tax rolls or any other development on the Main Street. And out of the thirty thousand, simple math is you get to keep what, thirty percent of that, that's nine thousand dollars. Whereas, you know, one of it goes to reduce state subsidy, you know, for education and revenue sharing, and an increase in county taxes. So it definitely is, is a very good idea. Does that answer your question?
Yes, thank you. Is there anything on the TIP topic? Whether with the existing TIP or potential future, to utilize TIP funds to pay for part of the building? Is that a thing?
So it, it paid for part of the municipal, the new municipal?
Yeah, yeah, like construction.
So it is in your best interest, it cannot in, in a summary of a municipal unless you actually buy it, sell it, and lease it back from them. So that's improving a new facility. But what it can do, and you know, Tim, Jen and I have talked about this, is whatever is in a TIP district, that can pay for capital infrastructure improvements, you know, roads, sidewalks, general obligation bonds, we talked about the broke general obligation bond, we can pay a portion, or a portion of that. You need new fire equipment, you can pay paraded portions of that, and so that pulls out the general fund budget, and so then now your general fund budget goes down, because it's a hundred percent funded or paraded funded out of the TIP district. Good question.
Sorry, good quiet.
No, I mean, I think Mike explained the process that we've gone through pretty well.
Keeps Mike alive and I'm eating.
Presentation didn't include any comments on meeting space. We need space in this, in this building for public hearings, we need space for elections, and we need space for people to come in, so what?
Hang on, let me get, let me move on, let me get to where I'm going. That's all there.
No, it isn't.
No, it's not on here, but I'm gonna get to you.
Oh, I thought we were.
No, I, I.
I wouldn't be comments, okay, I'll wait.
So one of, one of the things, where do we go from here? I, where I think we gotta go to is conduct a system assessment and a building evaluation, we gotta decide. There's, there's two parts, and the system assessment is exactly what Jack just brought up, what do we need? We've already identified, we need the space, we need, you know, we've identified some stuff, what you need for space, one of the things the council needs to identify is exactly what Jack's talking about, are you gonna hold meetings there, or are we gonna hold, you know, we're gonna have a room big enough to have, say, hold a hundred people, and beyond a hundred people, we go to the school or something. Is their voting gonna be there, or is voting gonna be somewhere else? That stuff you gotta, we gotta work out. Talk about a true assessment of, at some point, the building, so now from Council James, it always comes up, you know, Council James, to his point says, well, I'm not spending another penny in that building, I get that. But somehow we gotta come up with an assessment, or, or not do an assessment, say we're out of that building, we, either one. But we better come up with some factual ideas, just to get, to get to our solid answer of where we'll go. And then establish a clear path through the renovation, or establish your clear path to sell the old town hall property and build a new. And that includes where we're at now, all the groundwork we've done over the last six, eight months to get to where we are tonight. And timeframe, so now I'm gonna ask you to individually give me the council's thoughts, individually, collectively. And also, you know, we, we have considered like conference room and so forth, but I think there's other, you know, there's other pieces to this, and I need to have, we're at a stop point for us. We're at the intersection, so now it's time to talk a little more about, you know, where, what are your thoughts? I haven't, we haven't got to that point, that's that point, tonight I need your counsel input. Mike.
Maybe I could just answer Jack's question, Jack, I think. Maybe I could just answer Jack's question. Jack, um, I think the, the key que- answer your question that.
I didn't get to ask it yet. Very precious, Mike.
You're talking about public space, all the, this, this conference room, you know, and those things, but, but the, no matter where the building is located, where it's at, we're still gonna look at creating at-grade public space. This is a people's building. So the concept here is how do you, what does a people's building have that everybody uses? It's a space like this right here. You wanna have a space on the first floor that has windows that's open to the public. They can see the work that the public is doing. You can look inside, see the town, the council activities. You can see bigger assemblies, the doors outside that leave public spaces outside. So then it becomes a gathering place. So I think no matter where this goes, we have to create that kind of, of public space that, that really allows then, uh, uh, activity to take place so that you go to town, you go to town meetings, you go to town functions, you go and, and register your car at the first level. It's easy to do, makes a lot of sense. And also we have then, um, you know, uh, the council chambers are also on the first floor, lots of glass, looking outside with outdoor space. So you can have events that occur there. I think that would be a really important thing, no matter how we do this.
Is that, um, that, that's, that's type of space sounds great. Is that included in like what were the ten thousand square feet that we're estimating that large space is included in the ten thousand? It's okay.
Regardless if we renovate or build new, we're gonna make sure that there's plenty of room for council, for everything that everybody needs and for fifty to a hundred more years. That's the plan, regardless where we are, where we are.
You, you know, part of this would be a work, you know, down the road, we'll work group. That would, looks like they did for this building, that we would do the finite stuff. But tonight I need, so we've come to a focal point of the road. Um, and I need to get your council's input, so I can figure out what's next for moving this home. You know, so, that's, that's really all we have. Uh, but I, again, I wanna thank Denise, I wanna thank Mike and Sarah and Mike's staff, Jen, for all the hard work. It was really tough tuning this with a new budget and staff and people, all the other stuff, keeping everything going, but we've covered a lot of ground, I think, in sixty, eight months. So I'm curious to hear what the council thought of.
Anyone? Michael first?
I, I thank you for all the work. Um, it seems like there's been a ton of options, and I thank you for the presentation tonight. Um, you know, initially my gut feeling was like stay put and, and figure this out. Until I heard Denise say this could be a multi-use kind of facility. And I think our town needs business space downtown. I think carving out the parking in the back of the building would be a very smart option to keep that parking downtown and still make everything accessible. Uh, you know, I, I am really looking for, um, whatever building that we move forward to be energy efficient and to have upgraded systems. And, um, whatever we can do to lessen our environmental impact. You know, is, is, is something I would really look forward to myself. Um, again, my, my comments just about the need for potential space and whatever building that we look for as we look at other town facilities and those things later on. Um, I would, I, I kind of agree with John. If, if we are looking to move forward with moving this building, I don't know. I, I would want to give money towards the system success rate. But that's just, but.
I, I just have to be back on about the assessment piece. So if we were to go, kind of go down the path of let's build new, let's sell the building, like are we required to complete an assessment like that prior to the sale? Okay.
No, we don't. That's only if we're gonna plan on staying there, then we can just, that would be part of that project, we're doing a needs assessment in that building itself.
Okay. Anything else?
Yeah. Uh, going back to sheet five, uh, of the presentation, um, there's, there's no mention of the public in that, on that slide. And I think that's something we need to focus on. Page five. They're not numbered, but I know they're numbered.
Making the right decision is the header.
Yeah, it's all for our president's in the first one.
It's the first one.
Yeah, for, for access of the public and the public space of this building, um, is, is a critical part of, of, of what we need, because there's gonna be a point of sale on this. We have to, we have to sell the public. That, that the decision is being made is the correct decision. And, uh, we.
Yeah, I, yeah, right.
And, and so, I remember meetings, my first budget as a counselor. We had the town offices full. We cut the budget by two hundred and forty-one thousand dollars. Uh, it was the, for fiscal year two thousand eleven, two thousand twelve. And it was hot. And the people were hot. They didn't say no to any article except the last one where they said, no. We, you know, go find the money because we were over elderly. And, uh, and it was tough. We cut back services, we cut back a lot of things, and we've had other hot issues. Uh, if we bring up something that John and I like to talk about in terms of bad old days, there was a point in time where we talked about limiting fireworks in town because it was a particularly hot Fourth of July. This room would not make it. The size of room would not make it. Our current, our former council chambers barely made it. And there have been other things where people come out and there's, you know, it, we're, we're living through good days right now, is what I'm saying. It's not always been like this. And we've had uh, some tough meetings and where, where people needed to be heard, uh, even with the consideration of the police station. Uh, you know, the folks from Shoe Town came up and they wanted some answers. And it was, so we need to be able to accommodate that within the building. And, and I, I, I really believe that it's one thing to say we need the space for staff, council, that sort of thing, but we really, really need that public meeting space. And what that magic number is, I know we discussed in the past, that perhaps, you know, via Zoom and things like that, we need as many seats in the room because people will choose to tune in, just like with the various marijuana meetings that we've had. A lot of people chose to tune in. We had forty people on, 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 on the video. Uh, so this, this, that, that's, that's a really, really big deal. We do not wanna make the same mistake as the government made. They're scrambling right now because they chose to take short-term view and create the Dunaway Center as their town offices. It is inadequate. And so we need to make sure we have eyes wide open. And, and if, if we show that we've considered these sorts of things. And it's not gonna be my decision. I got four more meetings to go. But always remember that there's a point of sale. It doesn't matter about all the homework and all the work that was done. We're gonna have new people that are gonna show up. And they're gonna wanna know what about this and what about that, and we have to have the numbers. And so I, I would spend the money upfront, just like we spent the money on the survey for the comprehensive plan, but have the groundwork. It's gonna show a real number for the, the, the assessment and the, and the estimated costs. And whatever that is, I mean, we're not gonna take the building apart to do the assessment, but to have a real solid number to say this is what it would be for this type of renovation, that would be the equivalent of saying eight thousand square foot footprint on two stories. I think that, you know, a hundred and twenty by, uh, by seventy seems to be right-sized. Just, that, that's a swag number. But it seems like that's a, that's a, that's a good goal to have. And, uh, and I support what Mike's talking about on two stories, but that's the, uh, that's, that's the, uh, analysis that I have in terms of trying to sell this to the public because thank you very much for showing up early days, you know, you four in, in person. Uh, and, but there will be many more. And because we've heard, just like we heard the first glimmers of, uh, you know, thinking about doing the tennis court, Shoe Town, all the rest of the second net, brought up the, the police station debate again. And, uh, so we have to make sure our ducks in a row because, uh, there's gonna be people on both sides of the fence. And also the fact of, uh, of where we are with respect to our bonding. We're in a good situation right now. Bonding-wise, we're, we're below our, uh, our suggested limits as far as bonding. We're in good shape. People pay their bills. Uh, we, we have a very favorable bond rating. Uh, this building proved it. Uh, we estimated three point five percent. We got, we closed on this bond at three point one seven. And, uh, and so we have very, very good, uh, finances. You know, so South Park is a good risk, but we have to prove, because with inflation going up and people's, uh, retirement plans going down, they're gonna wanna know. And, uh, I could just encourage anybody who's listening tonight, pay attention to what's going on in the schools because what they, what the schools did to us in this budget cycle the last time was a travesty and, uh, and created, uh, what I think was unnecessary, uh, burden for taxpayers.
Thanks. Tim, you had something?
Yeah, so, uh, we kind of, I didn't touch on it tonight, Jack, but we have touched on that conversation. We talked about meeting space, room, so forth. We have talked. It's a little farther down in the weeds than where we're at right now. We, we haven't got quite there. We're, you know, we're still on the thirty thousand level, talking about the building itself, you know, whether, that's all. But, you know, that's an absolutely valid point and one we would wanna take in. You know, the, one of the pieces that Mike has really brought into the committee, not so much the committee, but the, just working with us, is honing in that has both a citizen and a community and, and the job he does. That this is the public's building. That's why I said when I started my presentation, this is the public building. And we have to make the right space for the public. You know, we have to make the right space for the employees too, but for the public and for the council. And the council chambers and the meeting space. We have to make it a good functional building. So we're, we're many, many meetings, you're right, away from all of that. And the public would certainly have a point of, you know, to get, have input and so forth. But that, that's why I wasn't mentioned and hit it. I thought, we're not there. I mean, we looked at different things, but, you know, would, would a room the size of the community, community center room work with something that big? Is that big enough, or is that smaller? Is, is that what you're thinking? I mean, something like that, uh, I'm just hypothetically asked.
All I know is that, that we had the fire chief show up at one of those talk meetings. And, uh, when we were in the, the Gonia Auditorium, the existing auditorium we have at town hall, and that has a capacity of three hundred, and George was, this is, you know, George Gorman saying, I'm really nervous. I, I don't wanna shut this down, but we were there. You know, you, you, you know, that's, you hit that number, you hit that number. And, uh, and it would have been a riot if we told people we had to leave.
Yeah.
And I, I think. I forget what the issue was on that particular night, but it was, it was physically hot and people were hot.
So emotionally hot. I mean, I, and that'll be one of the things I think with the work group when they start the design of the building and stuff. What are the needs? What, what are we looking to accomplish with a specific building? Is that something? If we had that hot button topic, if we're gonna do the fireworks permitting again, maybe that public hearing would be at Martinwood High School in the auditorium. You know, maybe, maybe it would be at someplace that you would hold, you know, enough people that you would have that.
I'd be sick that week.
Really wanna be beholden to the school?
I don't think so. I don't think so. I think we, we all started out with, you know, with our, our town halls were the parish halls. That, that's, that's where it all started in New England. We, we, you know, where there was a, it was a church hall. And that's where people gathered because that was the focal point of the community. And so I, I like that model. And I, and I think that this also serves as, if it's gonna be a couple of blocks away from where it is right now, three blocks away. Again, we have to create that focal point so people can really say this is our, this is the heart of our town. And, and, and there's, there's ways to do that with bricks and mortar, but there's also ways for people to embrace that. And that's why we have folks like you who can create that vision. Say, okay, this is how it's gonna be sold and, 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 you know, have a useful function. At, at the right cost.
Denise, I have something.
Yeah, I just, just wanted to say, um, to Tim's point, you know, just in going to the weeds. That said, there's a little bit of a weedy comment on the drawbacks on page eight that does say that the current offices are designed for use by existing space does not address staff, public, meeting space and operational needs. So we are considering. It's just on the drawback slide rather than on the, the new sites going to have meeting space. So it's actually been a serious topic of conversation.
Yeah, I read that, excuse me, interrupting, but I read that as, as, you know, we took a, an old Catholic school and on three stories, and we divvied it up. You know, we, we took classroom space and then fit offices in there. So, so it was backed in. That, that's how I looked at it. If it wasn't purpose-built.
Right.
Whatever we build new or renovation would be purpose-built.
Yeah.
For, for, for the, for the specific need.
What? You're waiting?
I've been waiting for a long time.
So hold on, your hats on this one.
Please.
Um, I'm gonna go, so starting off, we need to do assessment on the building. We have to. I hate spending money on that building. I think it's wasted, throw money out the window, but we need to do an assessment because after going through debacle of the police station and how we got there and the time we spent, which was more than we ever should have. Um, we need to be able to put upfront to the public why that building that everybody loves is not a viable option. We, we have to sell that. My opinion of where we should go doesn't matter. The other seven thousand residents matter. The only thing I do is I don't wanna increase my taxes because I'm already paying double what I did when I moved here and I'm not happy about it. But that being said, that building's gonna come down around our ears. Right? So we need to do something. But I think we need to start with the assessment. Find out what it's gonna cost. We know the elevator is bad. That's not even on the list of visual assessments, right? We know the elevator is bad. Um, we, we know that. We know from, from Perry's assessments are just longer out. We know the stuff is bad. So if we have that assessment, and then I think we need to, here we go again, this is coming from me, get a committee together of business people from downtown that this could possibly affect, and community leaders, have them get together and look at viable options in town where we could put it or what we should do and get their feedback. Let them work with the public. Don't put a counselor on that committee. We need to stay completely objective. So do it, it's the same with you. Don't put you on the committee. Don't put Jen on the committee. Get a, get some business owners and some community leaders and let them come up to us with some suggestions. It'll be an easier sell to the public. And that, we put people on there, then it's gonna, it's not gonna stop the complaints from getting left and right because nobody, half the people are complaining. There's nobody here. Thank you for coming, but I don't blame us or any of your four names on Facebook today complaining about the, the possibility of a town hall. So thank you. But we, we have to get public buy-in. And I think that's the only way we're gonna do it. Show them what the need is and get the community involved to help us out. Not what you're expecting from me.
So, fine. So, fine.
Jeff? What do you think?
I just have, uh, a couple of questions. Our current, right now, we're, we've got a lot of new people. What are we at for usage on the floors right now? Like what, first floor is just council chambers really, right?
All right, so just that meeting. It's really a meeting, meeting room now.
And we're basically at a hundred percent on the second floor.
Definitely.
Uh, yeah.
Third floor is about the same as the first, right? There's nobody out there, right?
Elections.
Right. So, um, so essentially, if that be, I'm guessing, you know.
I, I would, I would say yes in reality. The second floor is a hundred and fifty percent. We just, the people are stuck in the, I mean, you look at the clerk's office, that's, that is, you know, she's got the safe in there, you know, they're, they have little tiny workspaces. It's cut up. That, that, you know, that could double in size adequately. You could take another space exactly that. Open that up and have it a much more open space for working conditions and storage. And, you know, the wall. So that's just her space. That's not the, you know, then you, you look at the economic developer and the assessor now split the room where you guys used to be in your meeting room. That's, that's now shared between them and, and, uh, and Diane's office and Vernon's office. And there's three offices in there now. You know, so.
That's like five thousand square feet-ish.
Sixty-five.
Right. Fifty-five, yeah. So basically.
So we had the conference room that we're using, there's two of the offices for file runs, right?
Um, one of the things that I would like to see a little bit more as we move forward, and I liked what you guys did here. Um, when I read, you know, why stay? I see, I'll just label them nice and easy for you. I see an emotional reason, an emotional reason, and a functional reason. Why would you stay, right? We all, everyone likes the old building and we like the old building. And then it's functional currently. And then the, the drawbacks essentially are all functional. Not necessarily what I would classify as emotional. I'd like to see, are there any more functional reasons to stay?
We tried. We tried.
No.
Oh. Such, such as what?
I, I don't know. I mean, uh.
Roma Jones is next, though. Right, right.
So, so I don't wanna be the one to reply rather than South Borough. So I don't want to be the one to reply rather than South Burford, bulletin department. But for me, um, I look at and I see the street, the parking, that's the first reason, um, the location drawbacks from the current one. And it says access and egress from town hall, okay, and then traffic challenges.
Right.
I don't, I'm not an expert, but I don't see that being a much better Norton Street Railroad app being much better for traffic. And, and I would need to be sold on that, and I think the town would need to be sold on that because. The traffic on Norton and, and railroad, that traffic is horrible no matter when, where we're at. So I'm nervous about that, about the selling point. And then I understand the cost, right? So if I had, I mean, I'm, I'm no Bob Vila, but I've been a part of some stuff where I've taken old houses and ripped them down. And I mean, rebuilt them up and the ripping down does cost money, even though tie pen and on DIY makes it look like it's a lot of fun. But. The next one is offices designed for use. If we're gonna rid everything down to the walls, aren't we gonna be doing that? Aren't our offices in the current town hall going to be built for the use?
No, sorry, sorry to interrupt you. I think what they mean here is like, the, the way we, our current setup is, is we're being forced into a certain.
Okay.
Setup given what we have.
Right, but, but also on the flip side of that, a drawback for the current building is that they're designed. So they're saying a benefit to relocating is that we can build an office as we need to. Jeff, so I'm just saying, we're gonna be rebuilding.
So like Jack said, we, we took a nineteen thirties Catholic school with eight foot wide hallways.
Yeah.
And the classroom was designed for thirty students or forty students, whatever that was. With, with brick walls in the middle, bearing walls are about that thick in each other hallway, bearing walls on the outside. And then two by twelve or whatever that is, you know, dug for floor joints.
Yeah.
And squeaky floors. And, and that's the way it was built. So, so it's not even purpose built for schools, but to, but to make it purpose built for offices. We don't need any for hallways, so we're talking about maybe cutting bigger holes in the brick walls. Putting beams in there to make the offices, make the spaces work better. To make the spaces efficient, we need to get the April hallway down to something smaller than that.
That's what I need to hear.
Because I think that's. That's the real key. Th- tha- that's probably the big issue with renovate. Schools are great apartment buildings, but even, even their problems because they're eight foot wide hallways. So they wind up taking hallways basically making closets and stuff and cannibal rooms.
So, so the other thing that you just brought up, Jeff, the tail side of that, if we got a building and built it back for a user space. We'd still have a building that was seven or eight thousand feet too big for what we need that we'd be paying to eat. Sure. Right? So we still have seven, eight thousand square feet of a building we really can't use that we're gonna pay to eat cool. You're right.
Right.
And renovate and pay for with no additional tax dollars.
Right.
Well, then that was another thing I also. As a brainstorm idea. Is, is it even a possibility? Let's say that this is, that we're actually saying we wanna look at both options, right? Is it even a possibility to say, you know, town members, you guys are so concerned about this. Whatever auditorium is on the third floor. Is it even, is it a crazy idea to think that a community could say, we wanna create a friends of the third floor town hall? Where they're helping to restore and raise money to take that off of the town's pocketbook? If it's that much, like, I care a lot about things, but I'm not necessarily going to put my money towards it. But things that I do care about, I do put my money towards. Would, is that even worth fleshing out as a possibility?
The demonstrations are, are just awful. Windows, I mean, they're, they're terrible. I mean, we've, people have asked, why would I have June, uh, annual budget fees?
Right.
You, you, you can fry a fish in there.
You could in November in twenty eighteen.
Even, even if it offset the cost. The taxpayers are still gonna have to pay for that building year after year. No one's gonna offset that cost, right? I go back to the playground that the children's leadership council built for us, beautiful playground, they were funding it. All of a sudden they dissolve. Now the town owns, the town owns a playground that the town never voted to own. Nobody in this town ever said, hey, we wanna pay for this playground. Now it's a great playground and we need it. But the townspeople never gonna stay in that playground. So, yes, it would be great for them to bring that money to get the building done, but then we still have to pay for it in the end. Yeah, so that's, that's the other side of quick funding.
Yeah, and you would need a sinking fund. So, yeah, the care and feeding of the space after those folks are done. It, it happened with the town dog, down, down by the county. Raised fifteen thousand dollars, built the docks. His town, his docks, but there was no plan. Go ahead and maintenance because like anything else, they, they, uh, they wear and tear and, and they finally fell apart and there was no, no mechanism.
It's no different than LD two ninety. Here's this pretty thing, but now you get to figure out.
Correct.
Do it.
Yes, ma'am.
So, um, you know, the conversation about renovating and having somebody on the third floor, um, that's one option. The other option is to be able to keep it in the business fabric is to actually conduitize the bottom level, the, the street level. And turn that into retail privately sell the suites and you're not a landlord, you're actually selling the entire first floor. And you renovate the, the second and third floors for your offices and your meeting space. Um, that's an option. I mean, those are, you know, public private partnerships that happen all over the country. And, um, can this community sustain that sort of thing? I don't know. Is that what you want? I mean, that's an option. Um, I haven't discussed this with Tim, but yeah, this is just something that I came up with, you know, just sitting on the table, so I hope I'm okay. That's an option, you know, and I think my, that idea just spun from your conversation about can we use some of the third floor. We'd be better off putting everything into the business level on the first floor.
And then, um, one of my other notes, um. Oh. So I'm just, as you can see, I, I'm not either for or against moving, really. I'm just trying to, uh, make sure I'm kind of being a devil's advocate, uh, because you gotta put a good plan together to move. Um, so my question is, if. Like, if we stayed. If we stayed in the current town hall. What's stopping us from, because one of the selling points is that if we move. We will be take, we will be putting the current town hall site back on the books, like. What's stopping us from taking the Norton River app site and putting it back on the books? And what would that cost? That, you see what I mean? I see the benefit of putting that. I'm not saying do it, I'm just saying that is still. Sell it to the same people that would buy the town hall. Where, but not necessarily, right? I mean, it's, it's, it's an option. I'm just saying, these are questions that I know I'm going to field.
I, I don't think that it would be worth one point five million that far.
Yeah.
And we would lose parking leases.
Part of the reason we, we built those eight two spaces was to support the businesses. Both the Wentworth Douglas facility and, and, uh, New York Hospital has their, their, their parking lot. But basically the, uh, what we're, that's whatever, they, they, they help populate that. And there's other business spots that were, that they use for their employee parking. Uh, so we have to consider that. It's kind of like, okay, we built it, now we're gonna take it away. Like, I guess I really don't like that idea.
I mean, it's, it's not really an idea, it's just an option to, to, to point out that there are options within the options that were.
Absolutely.
Right, so.
There's another option on town hall property, if you don't want the town hall downtown, you have where the red barn is. Play your room right there.
That's restricted to recreation, unfortunately.
That's what?
Restricted to recreational.
I'm not sure on that. I think it ends on the backside of that. I don't believe that was part of these. I think that barn was there before, but I could be wrong because we looked at it for the location. Excuse me, the town hall, and that never came up.
I will relook.
So, shoot me an email because I'm curious, because we looked at it hard for the, for the police station, so I'd be curious for how we missed that.
So you didn't pick that location, must have been for a reason.
I think they wanted it in hell.
They wanted what?
They wanted the police station in town.
Oh.
I'll leave that comment there.
Um, I think. I, I, again, I appreciate all the work and I'm glad that you guys had to do it and not me. It's really good. And, um, well, there was something else.
While we're there, Tim, the only thing I'd like to bring up, because it got brought up to me and I know it's been brought up before. If we do decide to build a new town hall. And we do decide downtown location, it can't look like this building. It needs to fit in with the way downtown looks. It, it, it needs to, just like your, your hospital did there, and where Doug was at there. It needs, it needs to fit to look itself, but. It, it, this is way too industrial for downtown. So it's just a. If Mike works on something, make it pretty and make it fit in.
If Mike worked on your hospital.
See, I gave you credit, didn't even know. I, it just, it's something that we, we need to.
Yeah, truly.
And the green space that we're talking about in front of, uh, the current town hall. That's a actual park, right? Is that a diet?
There's a memorial there.
Right.
The granite benches, right?
But is it?
We got that, plus we have the, the Vietnam Memorial there.
That's an actual, written up park, I just didn't know how that would.
It's not listed, it's not listed under the parks. We had counting house, we had. That one.
Joy.
Joy. Yeah, but yeah, that wasn't one where we. Again, I could be wrong because I could be wrong about the red barn.
I'll let you know.
I can. Loser buys an ice cream?
I think just to finish up, I think that as far as asking my thoughts, I think it's, uh, a good. A good thought and good plan to be able to put in front of the people and, and have good conversations about. I think this is at least a start to really look at, um. You know, good pudding to look at what we have and really what we can potentially be and have some really fruitful conversations. Once we get past emotion, which would be, I think, the harder part that we'll, we'll have. And I think that once we get past emotion of what we're used to and what we'd like. I think that we have, you guys have come up with a really good plan and option. So thank you very much.
I am wondering if with our engagement with Sabego Technics coming up. If we can pose to them from a traffic in, in, um, in and out kind of flow perspective. Sort of like a hypothetical of like if we were to relocate town hall to that location, if they could provide us with any, um. Insights as to, because I mean, I, traffic is an issue regardless and in both locations. I feel very strongly that we, I love the first floor public space. Like having the clerk's office being on, on a first floor. Um, certainly any type of meeting space not being on the third floor of a building. Um, it seems like both options sort of would give us that. Um, I think you all have done a ton of work and obviously considered like what seems to be like all of the town. All of the town on properties to the, the best of your ability and I don't wanna, I'm glad you guys did that. And it's your role to come to us with, these are the things we considered and here's the information and that's what you've done today. I think, John, to your point about the committee. My fear with, like, I feel like when you bring a big group of people together with no options, a decision will never be made. You know, so I think like certainly some type of committee option could work to consider a couple of options. But I think the, like, give it to the townspeople to come up with a place to put it. I wish I could say that I feel like that would work, but I feel like it would.
So we did it with the police station, we gave them two options and they came back to us with absolutely nothing.
Yeah.
And we had a public hearing that never went anywhere.
Yeah.
I just want them to look at the possible ideas and get public feedback. I'm not looking for them to tell us where, I'm really looking for them to, to engage the public at that level. But like I said, with the business owners and with community leaders, they're out there talking to people every day. Get us the feedback. That's all I'm looking for. Not really for them to give us suggestions or way to put it, because that never works.
Yeah.
Pretty sure of that.
I sort of like, like, I, I agree on, like, we for sure need to have all of the information to be able to really sell this and get the public on board. And no matter what, people, there's going to be groups of people that are not on board with whatever option, we're never gonna please everybody. Um, but I, and I wasn't around for all the public hearings and stuff for the police station. I was like, I came in basically after all the hard work was done, so you guys can speak to that a little bit better, but like. I know that the police station, there was concern about the police station, obviously in Shu Town, but from what I could gather, it was. Um, a lot of it was around like removing, the removal of that green space, which this proposal doesn't do. Um, or sorry, the relocation proposal doesn't do, and concern about like the, the lights and the sirens and people going in and out and stuff. Of the, from the police station. So I guess what I'm saying is I'm curious, like, I would almost be interested in perhaps posing. Because it seems like we're down to like two options, renovate, move to railroad app unless somebody can come up with some other miraculous option. Um, to just like have a public hearing almost like sooner rather than later, just to get a sense from people of like. Is, is the Shu Town neighborhood so. Far off the table that we are really gonna have to spend the money on the, on an assessment to be able to sell it? Or are people gonna be okay with that idea, you know, because, I mean, how much do we think an assessment is gonna be? Thirty thousand at least, at minimum?
It'll have, it'll, it'll have to be the engineering assessment.
Yeah.
Have to be engineers in mechanical, electrical, plumbing engineers, you know, and they look at hard and then, and then put some real numbers to it. Probably an estimator, you know, third party estimator come out and say it's gonna cost us much to renovate, you know, so it's, it's not a little task.
Must be done. I see, you're not, you wouldn't sell me without knowing what it was gonna cost. I, because there's nobody that sits at this council table with the exception of Jack. And, and he, that's not even his, his genre. None of us have any experience in any of that, right? And, you know, I, I'm not gonna give my opinion on it unless I have some whole, card whole, whole hard facts to tell the people. It's gonna cost us four million dollars to renovate this, so I think it's a good idea if we build a new town hall. I, I need that to be able to say that. We knew that the police station would not work the way it was. We had numbers, we knew that wasn't functioning since the eighties. That was an easier sell. I, I, I need something for me to be the, the public to say, it's really gonna cost us. And you know, I hate spending money, but I think this is money well spent. I don't think we're gonna sell it unless we, we do our homework. And show the public of what that building's gonna take to renovate.
Without any, any facts and figures. I, I really liked your analysis, Jeff, about the, the subjective versus objective and emotion and. And functionality. Uh, if we go to a public hearing at this stage without any backup. We're gonna be buying a bucket full of emotion and, and, uh, we're gonna get those kind of reactions and we're gonna. Just, you know, create a lot of sparks and it's not gonna be productive. So we have to, if we're gonna have a public hearing, we have to be able to show them something. And then at that point in time, we, we have, even though. Who knows what costs are gonna be when it comes, kind of turn a shovel, because, you know, increased price and stuff like that. But at least we'll have a balanced view to, to present to the public at that point. So we still have homework to do and, uh, and, and I think we, we need to be able to allow the people to, to, to vent. And to express their, their opinions. Uh, we can't deny the, the emotional side of it. Uh, but at the same time, we can temper that with, uh, with objective commentary.
Were you, weren't you, I thought like one of you guys were gonna say something earlier.
The only thing I was gonna say is obviously we know the first floor is not viable. So that was one floor off. We know the third floor doesn't have. We know that. Just hitting out.
So, we don't think, just so you know, any decision will get made tonight.
Yeah, yeah.
This is, I wanted to, we wanted to put this in front of you, and I think there's, you know, some more homework that we have to, to do to go forward. One of the things that I, I, I wanna leave you with this thought tonight, as we get ready to conclude. How old that building, how, Jack, how old is this?
I think it was nineteen thirty-three.
Nineteen twenty-six.
A almost a hundred-year-old building, some of the systems in there, we don't know what they are, what, you know, what, what's the work. Every day that goes by, we come to work and we go home, we close the lights, we shut the doors, it's a good day. Nothing catastrophic, that building's happened. One of the things John brings up a good point, is us recognizing the value of what we have versus what we'll need. And what we need to do to stay able to continue working business, we don't wanna end up with frozen pipes, January eighth, at eight o'clock in the morning. That building being closed for four weeks, you have to relocate town offices, that is gonna be an expense, the, the tax base are gonna come yelling at you folks about. You think you got questions now, there's gonna be questions, that's an old building, there, when I walk through that building, I can tell you there are a lot of unknowns. We'll look in the boiler rooms, see the old oven tube wire, we'll look at the roof and look at all panels on the third floor that has stains on. How much is that roof leaking, why is it leaking, how much rot is behind it, I don't know any of that stuff. You know, stand beside the windows in the winter time, feel the cold drafts coming. There's a lot of unknowns, and every day that goes by, you can understand, we're trying to be as efficient as we can on the taxpayer dollar and, and figure out ways to do this. We have got, as painful as it may be, motion-wise or motion-wise not. We have to move this, you, I, I should say we, I don't have to do anything, I can go to work tomorrow, I have an office, if it goes bad, I'll take my laptop to work at home. I don't know what I'll tell you next, but, but if we don't do something, time is gonna get us. This building's getting older, it's almost a hundred years old. So, you know what old homes do, and you know how that works. So, we gotta start thinking about something, doing something, because it's easily ignored, I get it. Because we just go on with our daily lives, but I gotta be the thorn in the bush here, I gotta be the bad guy to say to the council. And the citizens and the public and everybody, you know, you got an old building, and the roof leaks, and the windows aren't so tight. And if this was your house, what would you do? Would you be saying, you know, Tim, it's okay, don't worry about it, okay? You know, but just, I just, I want the council to be aware as we move forward. And we'll, you know, we'll continue to look at the plan, I'm not asking to make decisions tonight, I wanted to get you some feedback from you tonight, that was, that was the important piece. And we got some great, great feedback, and we'll interject all that stuff, go back and, and we'll reassemble and start looking at what's, so, what's next.
I wanted to comment, um, when we're dealing with public facilities, public equipment, could be a fire truck, could be a bulldozer, it could be a building. And is a, is a pretty solid rule that if you have that old truck, building, the old truck. Um, and it needs some work. When you get to a point where you're exceeding fifty percent of the replacement cost. Really have to take a good hard look as to whether it's worth it, and most of the time, it's not worth it. If you, if you can keep going on it, twenty-five percent of the replacement cost, yeah, do it. But in, in fifty percent isn't the hard rule, but it is a pretty good indicator. So, if, maybe to front-end. Again, we have variables with estimating new construction, accelerators and things like that, we don't know where it's gonna go exactly. Just like we didn't know what the bond is gonna do for this building. Uh, but when we get the consultants in, and all of a sudden, the tabulation starts getting up, past fifty percent. Of what that new cost might be, we can go timeout, I think we've learned enough. And, 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 and that works, it works with, with, with capital equipment. And, uh, and so, that's just what I'll leave you with as far as that, that analysis.
All I have, Chair.
Do you need anything else from us, any other?
Nope, I think we'll take the feedback, and we'll go back, and we'll, we'll have, you know, we'll sit around the table and, you know, share our thoughts at that point. I'll, I'll get back with Mike and Sarah, and we'll kind of, you know, we have a little focus working group right now, which is just us. And try to move the, get on the road a little further. Or, and you know, and it's not that we're not including the public, it was just not at that level yet, we just, we're still, we're in, we're in the, you know, we're in a thirty thousand foot range. We just, you know, the public gets there at twenty thousand or ten thousand foot range, there's certainly many.
I've heard from the public.
Well, we have to, yeah.
We have to, and that's, that's good, I'm glad that they take an interest in the building. And, and one of the things, and John's absolutely right, the public's gonna need to know what's wrong with this building, why, why are we asking for a new building? Now, than one-day assessment where someone walked around with a camera and photos, I don't have that in.
Yeah.
You know, and so I, you know, there's a lot more to do, but I just, tonight's idea was to show you what we've done. And to get some more feedback, so we can try to move forward and we'll refer. I have some stuff, and then we'll go from there at some point, and probably show up on the agenda item down the road. You know, we're gonna try to do what we can feasibly to make sure the building's sound and tight for the weather, for the winter. And get through that, and that's, you know, the number one goal, make the house sound tight for the winter, that weekend. And try to keep it going as long as we can, but down the road, this is a project that I think needs our attention.
Yeah, for sure, I, I think, I think that we all agree on that, for sure, that we need to do something about town hall. Anyone else, last, last chance?